At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Haywood County Schools Board of Education to order. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he'd lead us in our board prayer. Everyone, please rise for the board prayer and immediately follow by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, once again, we're so thankful for the beautiful days you've given us. Lord, we are so thankful for the Haywood County students and the accomplishments that they's made during this school year. Lord, we pray that during these summer months, we can keep our children safe, keep our communities safe, their families. Lord, let them have a great break for the summer. And, Lord, we pray that you be with all those that graduated and moving on to the next chapter of their lives. We pray again, Lord, for those who may have sicknesses or illnesses or troubles, Lord, please help them look to you for guidance, as we as this board needs to look for you as guidance, to help direct us and guide us in the decisions that we make for the Haywood County school system. And again, Lord, we're so thankful for this great school system, for the staff and the workers and the teachers and every department that makes this one great school system. And, Lord, as we make these decisions, again, we ask that you help us to make the right decisions, the best decision, to better educate children of Haywood County. And, Lord, you know that we will give this all to the glory of your name. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'd like to announce that Mr. Francis is on a family vacation and Mr. Burnett is at a business meeting, so they won't be here tonight, but just want to let you know that they're with us somewhat, probably thinking about it a little bit. Anyway, the next regular board meeting will be held here July 8th at the Education Center here at 7:00. We have one graduation left to go, three down, four down, one to go. Four down, right? I've gone to three out of the four I just missed last night, anyway. Haywood Community Learning Center graduates Thursday, June 6th at 5:30 PM at Haywood Community College Auditorium. I'd like to remind everyone about the upcoming Quick Draw fundraiser. It is June 15th up at Law Ridge Country Club at 5:00. Quick Draw, June 15th. Any other announcements that need to be made? All right. At this time, I do have one agenda adjustment board. If we can, I would like to add the band chorus drama Junior ROTC supplemental scale to our agenda, and we'll do it right prior to or during the finance committee piece.
Mr. Chairman, Building Grounds has six additional motions, please.
Okay, we'll do it right after the finance committee, right after Budget 7, Amendment 7 from Mr. Clark. Any other adjustments that need to be made?
Finance Committee has two additional.
Two additional? We'll just do it under finance then, Mr. Clark. That's all right, without objections. Okay. Tom, we need a motion for approval of the amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Henson, say it with Mr. Nesby. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being number of votes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Mr. Casey Crook and Ms. Smith. Excuse me, Dr. Casey Crook, excuse me.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, sorry, that's not louder than I thought. We are so excited today that we have the privilege to announce Haywood County's Employees of the Year. We got the great privilege of being the Haywood County Schools' Principal of the Year and Haywood County Schools' Teacher of the Year to serve on the committee. I want to first share that our county has some wonderful employees, and it was very difficult because they all deserve recognition, but we're excited to announce the ones today. We have a short little blurb about each person, and if you are here and you didn't know, we're excited to announce today. So, we're going to start with the After School Employee of the Year. The Haywood County Schools' After School Employee of the Year is Penny Singleton from North Canton Elementary. For more than 20 years, Ms. Singleton has worked with after school. She is dedicated to her kids and thinks of them as her grandchildren. She works hard and gives the students in the North Canton Elementary School After School Program 100%. Her principal describes her as a jewel and a true asset to the school. Congratulations and thank you, Ms. Singleton. The Haywood County Schools' Bus Driver of the Year is Mr. Jim. Mr. Jim, as the students call him, is a positive influence on our students. When students refer to Mr. Jim, it is always with a smile on their faces. He enjoys chatting and joking with his students, and many have mentioned him as a positive influence in their life. He treats the students with respect, and the students of... The students notice and appreciate him. Thank you, Mr. Jim, for your patience for a job that sometimes goes unnoticed. We are thrilled to recognize you as a Haywood County Schools' Bus Driver of the Year. And that's Jim Dennison. The Custodian of the Year, the 2024 Haywood County Schools' Custodian of the Year is presented to Bobby Watson. Mr. Watson has worked for the past five years to ensure that Bethel Middle School is clean and suitable for children. The students care for Mr. Watson, and if he is not at school, they will ask when he is returning. He is dedicated, willing to help, and is a jack of all trades. Bobby is a valued member of the staff and performs every task at an incredibly high standard. Middle schoolers can be a difficult audience to win over, but Bobby's attitude and personality is a testament to his importance to our students. He is a rare combination of hard work, grace, and encouragement. Thank you for all that you do for Bethel Middle School. Haywood County Schools' Food Service Employee of the Year is Kristy Stanley. Kristy is a one-woman show at Central Haywood High School. Her heart for children is apparent in all that she does. She keeps the cafeteria decorated and pleasant for our students and staff, the students genuinely want to see and to talk to her. Ms. Stanley goes out of her way to make sure students get the food and care they need. She is a hard worker, loved by all, and is so well-deserving of the Haywood County Schools' Food Service Employee of the Year. Haywood County Schools' IT Employee of the Year is Zach Duval. Zach always has a smile on his face. He is always calm, helpful, and is our technology hero. Our teacher said, or one teacher said, "He never makes you feel like you are the problem or as if you have messed something up." Technology is his specialty, and he understands it is not always everyone else's forte. Zach is supportive, readily available, and is a true problem solver. I'm pleased to recognize Zach Duval for his hard work as the IT Employee of the Year.
Instructional Support Employee of the Year, Michelle Moll is one of five social workers for Haywood County Schools. She is currently serving students at Bethel Elementary, Clyde, and Jonathan Valley. There is so much she helps with on a daily basis, from providing food, figuring out transportation, and just simply listening to students so they don't feel isolated or alone. Michelle is our McKinney Vento guru and is willing to do anything to help our students. She is thorough when doing a home visit and treats everyone with respect, even in a tough situation. She helps transport children and gets them to school when they wouldn't attend otherwise. Michelle is a true advocate for Haywood County Schools and our students. She has certainly earned this recognition. Congratulations to Michelle Moll, Haywood County Schools' Instructional Support Employee of the Year. The Maintenance Employee of the Year goes to Brian Franklin. Brian works in the plumbing department and helps out wherever else he may be needed. He is kind, strong, and is just genuinely a nice guy. Brian is always available to lend a helping hand. His colleagues look to him often for help, advice, and support. His colleague said, "I recommend him because he is a great person doing a nasty job." We're so thankful to have Brian. Congratulations. Office Support Employee of the Year. The Office Support Employee of the Year is Ms. Rhonda Messer from Canton Middle School. She was so excited to be recognized. Ms. Messer works in the front offices as a great asset to the school. She shows great professionalism as the face of Canton Middle School. She has held many titles at the school, and no matter which role she's been in, our students always come first. She is a juggler of tasks every single day and does it with organization. Her colleague said she is constantly juggling calendars, directing phone calls, and helping students with questions. She does it all with a smile on her face and with such care and attention to every need. We love and appreciate her so much, and she is deserving of this recognition, and I think she also has a tracker in my jacket at all times because she can somehow find me no matter where I am, even if I'm trying to escape. Congratulations, Rhonda. The Teacher Assistant of the Year. Haywood County Schools' Teacher Assistant of the Year is Rachel Heisler from PHS, Pisga High School. Ms. Heisler has worked for Haywood County Schools for over 10 years. She currently works with the severe and profound population and does it with grace and care. Her day is not over at 3:00, when students go home. She then helps with men and women's basketball teams as well as tennis and volleyball. She comes to work every day with the desire to make students' lives better. Pisga High School is better because of Rachel's dedication. Congratulations to Rachel Heisler, HCS Teacher Assistant of the Year. And the Transportation Employee of the Year, Ms. Laura Murray, is a vital component to the transportation office. She is dedicated to the department and school system alike. Because of her, our state transportation DPI efficiency rating has improved. Laura is knowledgeable in her field and an excellent note-taker. We are very fortunate to have her in our system and especially in the transportation department. It is with great pleasure that we award Laura Murray as the HCS Transportation Employee of the Year. Okay, we've got one more group. Congratulations to all of our Employees of the Year. Well done and well deserved. Congratulations to all of you. We've also got a group that is outgoing, our retirees. Y'all ready? Heather's got us color-coded, so I'm going to get her back the mic.
Sean Paris. Sean Paris, congratulations. Carol Fox. Donna Phillips. Marilyn McGee. Martha Child. Naomi Ruth Chandler. Joan Kennedy. Deborah Stineal, sorry. Ravanda Stevens. Lisa Glantz. Martha Brown. Valerie Guyer. A.C. Sprinkle. Michelle Davis. Jennifer Williamson. Ricky Warren. Mickey Limbo. Dana Mortiz. Michael Clark Webb. Holly Trel. Lori Moody. Margaret Rogers. Haraleen Finger. Kendra Collins. Farin Charlie Edwards. And Jeff Battle. Congratulations. Congratulations, Brian. Ms. Rhonda. Michelle Moll, report to the... Michelle.
Our next recognition is, this is what we call our Lugnut Award, and at the bus garage, we go through and we think about somebody that's really helped us out throughout the year, and I'm going to read this plaque to you. It says, "A lugnut is a small part of a much larger machine in comparison to the rest of the bus. It seems so small and inadequate. Surely, it isn't that important. However, one small vital part of this bus is vital to the bus's integrity and workability. Just like the lugnut keeps the bus going safely, we have some wonderful coworkers who keep our morale and people together in our department going. The lugnut is an award for people who go above and beyond to hold up their people, who does not see a problem as not my responsibility, but works with everyone else to show kindness to others, their joy to work with and to be around. Our department would like to celebrate this person who worked tirelessly to ensure that operations are fluid and easy. We are fortunate that you are the kind of person that just works with so much courtesy and goodness." Presented to Mr. Baron Rogers.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, I have the privilege of recognizing another one of our outstanding teachers, a Kenan Fellow. Through the Kenan Fellows Program for Teacher Leadership at NC State University, Kenan Fellows will spend three weeks collaborating with local experts in STEM fields including agriculture, scientific research, and clean energy. They receive a $5,000 stipend and participate in 80 hours of professional development focused on innovative teaching, building leadership capacity, and strengthening connections between their schools and the local community. Our own amazing AIG STEM teacher at Waynesville Middle School, William Yates. William has received this prestigious award, and he is an outstanding teacher both inside and outside the classroom, so he's going to be an exemplary representative of Haywood County Schools. His fellowship is with the Appalachian Sustainable Agriculture Project. So, we're eager for him to come back and share his experience with us, but this is a great honor, and we are so proud of him.
I'm going to take a point of personal privilege tonight. I wanted to, first of all, thank Mr. Yates for the wonderful job he does with our kids. There's times as a parent or a grandparent that you receive information from your child is very supportive, and I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Yates. There's times whenever you receive an email and you're afraid to open it up sometimes, you know? This time, you know, it was concerning my grandson, and it was a very supportive letter, and I appreciate it very much. And teachers and administrators, you don't know how much it means to parents sometimes to get a little positive feedback from our kids. It means a lot to them. Sometimes they've had a rough time, maybe, a rough place in the road, but a little encouragement might bring them out of a bad place. For that, Mr. Yates, thank you for your kind words about my grandson. Thank you.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, for my bit of recognitions this evening, we've got some athletics, got middle and high both, and also sportsman's club. So, we're going to start off with Bethel Middle School and their Athletic Director, Julie Green.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, thank you for having us this evening. Lots and lots of recognitions out here tonight, so I'll try to be as brief as possible, but also dote on our kids for just a second. I told them earlier, this is the first time I've had to write everything down just to make sure I get it all right. They've had an amazing spring sports season, and I want to make sure they get the recognition that they deserve. First up, Finn Fox was our individual golf conference champion this season. He was consistent all season long, just absolutely running the table on everybody, and over the course of two days at Springdale and Cummings Cove, he had the low score, so huge congratulations to Finn. These next recognitions are extra special to me because while I do have the title of AD, I'm also coach, and track is something that I never knew how much I would love, but these kids just reinforce that for me every single day. So, we have lots of recognitions here. I'd like to begin first with Ms. Chloe Collins. She is conference champion in the 400-meter dash. We're going to follow her up with three boys kind of all together because they were a part of a team, but they also won some individual awards. So, Cale Holloway, Josh Low, Ryan Rife, and Harper Jensen, who could not be here this evening, were part of our four-by-one relay team where they won the conference. This team also went and competed at the state level and took second place overall. They've broken school records, conference records, and we are just thrilled for them. In addition to those team awards, Cale also is conference champion in 110-meter hurdles and high jump. Josh is champion in triple jump and the 100-meter dash. And going back to that state meet for just a second, Cale also placed top 10 in hurdles there. Josh was top 10 in the 100-meter. Ryan took third overall in long jump, and Josh is a state champion in triple jump. So, there's so much to be proud of. These kids have worked so hard, and I'd like for them to have their moment. So, come on up, guys.
All right, next up, we've got Pisga High School, and their Athletic Director will start us off, Ms. Heidi Morgan.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, and Mr. Graham Haines, thank you for having us today and for recognizing all of our athletes in Haywood County, but specifically the ones that are near and dear to my heart, Pisgah High School. First, we have Coach Harold Shepherd with our men's baseball.
How are y'all? Um, thank you for having us. Um, I'm gonna take this opportunity to brag on these young men that I've got coming up in front of you for just a second. Um, collectively, just this group of young men has got a 3.86 GPA. Um, two freshmen in this, this group. Um, one senior is not able to be here right now. He is playing in Hendersonville for the Honeycrisp, which is a collegiate crossover team with a couple of high school seniors playing. I think three high school seniors, to be exact, um, which is a big deal, and, you know, he's chasing bigger fish than what we're, we're fishing for right now. Um, these young men had a really good season. Uh, they, they were about four innings shy of tying the state record for most innings played in a game, um, at, at Rockingham. Um, that, that was a marathon. I don't know if you listened to it or not, but that was a long game, and, uh, you know, they, they epitomized what we at Pisgah believe in. They fought all the way up until then. Um, they did it with dignity, and they did it with everything that they had. Unfortunately, we came up a run short, and it happened at 12:35 at night. So, you know, and, and the whole time that I've played ball and been around ball, 45-plus years, that's the longest game I've ever been involved in. So they've got something to put in their hat and, and carry with them after this, 'cause it was, it was a long night, and then they got up and came to school the next day. So, in any case, Walker Fox is not here. Um, Carson Allison, played first base for me. Carson's a junior, had a really good year at first base. Um, Zachary Wester. Zack is a freshman, sophomore now. Um, threw very well all season, um, came in running and never looked back. Isaiah Mintz, another freshman. Raised a catcher and converted to an outfielder, um, and, and did a good job as it. And then Boone Carver was my catcher all year. Really strong leader, and, uh, you know, he's, he, he came through when we needed him to come through. Really good young men, and I'm proud to have had the opportunity to coach them.
Next, we have the varsity softball team, and I would like to call all of them up here first before I, I speak about them and our team. First, we have Addie Faust. Tannen Sarls. Sadie Messer. Mac Jones. Riley Campbell. Addie Sarls. And Savannah Dickerson. This group of young ladies, along with their teammates, exceeded every expectation that, and goal that we set for ourselves. Um, I've never seen a group that is more dedicated and hardworking than them. They come to practice every day. Um, I never had to motivate them. Um, I never had to make sure they were on time. They, they did all of that themselves. Um, every day was a new obstacle, and we pushed ourselves just to get better, and I'm extremely proud of you guys and our team. Our motto this year was family, so that, you know, no one person stands out. We do everything together, and I'm extremely proud, blessed to be your coach, and I love you guys very much. A few accomplishments that we had this year, um, from teams, we had three players sign for college scholarships, which is the most that I've ever had as a head coach. Um, and then I would like to give a shout out to Sadie Messer, who, um, was a pitcher on the mound, spent a lot of time there for us, and ended the season with 133 strikeouts. Next, we have, um, our track team with Coach Morris.
Good evening, Dr. Putnam, Dr. Haines, Ms. Barker, Chairman Francis, and members of the board. Thank you for taking the time tonight to recognize the accomplishments and successes of our student athletes. Coach Williamson sends his best, as he, as he had a knee replacement yesterday, tried to be here tonight but couldn't. Um, starting with our all-conference athletes this season, we had our boys four-by-one team consisting of Jordan Nelson, Aaron Clark, Evan Byrd, and Mason Putnam. To achieve this title, you have to finish first among all seven teams in the Mountain Seven. Additionally, Preston Wright and Shot Hood, who PR'd over the season by seven feet, and our men's four-by-four team, Ben Frazier, Ashton Sutton, Mason Putnam, and Evan Byrd. More about them later. Next, I want to recognize our all-region athletes. Once again, our men's four-by-four team, Ben Frazier, Evan Byrd, Ashton Sutton, and Mason Putnam. Throughout this season, these men broke their own school record four times and will look to break it again in a few weeks at Adidas Nationals. Lastly, we have our state qualifiers. These athletes must be in the, in the top four of the region to attend the state championships. Our state qualifiers were our women's four-by-one team, which was Maddie Dorlin, Sarah Reinhardt, Avery Ponder, and Bailey Connor. These girls ran their season best at the state meet. Next, Ms. Caroline Henson, who ran the 800-meter and placed 12th, previously PR-ing at the regional meet. Ben Frazier, who competed in the 300-meter hurdles and finished 10th. He was also on our men's four-by-four team, who made the podium and finished fourth. This is a very big deal. We couldn't be more proud of these kids. They embody everything we hope Haywood County, Haywood County Schools students are.
Alright, I'm just so proud. They are humble, they work hard, they strive to be better every day, and never stop supporting each other. They represent Haywood County Schools at the highest capacity, and we are grateful for all they've done and continue to do for the track program and Pisgah High School. Lastly, as this chapter of my life comes to a close, it has been my great honor to coach in Haywood County Schools, and I imagine witnessing these athletes' success will be some of the most meaningful events and memories of my life. This program and these athletes have blessed me more than I could ever imagine. Thank you, board and Pisgah High School, for giving me the privilege to work with these kids. They truly are the best. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Putnam. As a parent of track, I just wanna thank everybody that was involved with the track. They are amazing, and we appreciate what very well they did, but they are awesome. And for the kids, we really appreciate that.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
You don't have to quit. You don't have to quit, Coach. You can still coach.
Well, I don't know, y'all can talk some out, I guess. So, okay, okay. Sounds good. Thank you guys so much for everything.
Next, we have, um, Coach Bentley Rogers with men's golf, and I would like to say congratulations to Coach Rogers. He was the Mountain Seven Golf Coach of the Year.
After two holes. Um, good evening. Uh, I just wanna take a few minutes to recognize our, our golf team. Um, first thing I'd like to thank, the people I'd like to thank is the golf courses of Haywood County. Um, you talk to other coaches around the state, a lot of them have like one golf course they can practice at. They get there one, two, three days a week at the most. You know, we've got five golf courses, and they do a tremendous job of allowing us to just come and practice. There's no fee. So, you know, you think about from the range balls to every time we go practice, the matches, there's thousands of dollars donated each year just to our team, not alone the middle schools. Um, so there's, so if you play golf, or, you know, no people play golf, encourage them to support the local golf courses, 'cause they do a really good job of, you know, during the season, then afterwards, you know, our kids will call, hey, can we come play? And they'll say, yeah, come play after 5 o'clock, you know, you can walk for free, or you can take a cart for $20 or something. So they do an excellent job in that. Springdale, Waynesville, Maggie Valley, Law Ridge, and, uh, Lake Janulusco. My next person I'd like to thank is Caleb Smith. Caleb Smith this year volunteered his time, had to come out and coach, uh, and he did a tremendous job of, uh, you know, his, his knowledge of the game and helping us out. Um, let's see. I'll go ahead and introduce our, uh... I'll start with, uh, Jonas Smith. Jonas Smith was a all-conference this year, um, member, part of the regional qualifying team. Matthew Mahaffey. Matthew Mahaffey was, um, all-conference state qualifier, and he was the Player of the Year for the Mountain Seven. And to earn that, to earn the honors of all-conference and Player of the Year all-conference, you just have to finish in the, you finish in the top 12 out of 36 players, um, out of three rounds, and then Matthew was the low scorer after three rounds, the average score around 73 or 74, like two to three overs where he shot this year in the conference tournament. It was really good. Next, we have Micah Devlin for all-conference. Carson Ray, regional qualifier. Hampton Shipman. And Hank Bradley. Hank Bradley was an all-conference, all-conference and state qualifier. This year, we had the, a big advantage for us this year is, uh, Springdale allowed us to have regional tournament, which qualifies you for the state tournament. Was able to host that, and that was a big advantage for us and our conference, something we wanted to do. Um, we had 96 players there that day, so you think just the money that was donated that day just by Springdale averaged at $65 of 96 kids. Uh, they had to shut down the course. Um, but Hank, he was a, he was in a seven-man playoff, and was able to earn one of those individual spots. That was, it took him three holes, buried the last hole, so it was a big accomplishment there for Hank. So, so I'm proud of you guys, and, you know, our goal next year is just keep doing what we're doing right, keep winning. Thank you.
I would like to thank on behalf of Pisgah Athletics, members of the board, Dr. Putnam, for your continued support for Haywood County athletes and students. You guys do a tremendous job, and we wouldn't be the school system we are if it wasn't for you guys. Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got Tuscola High School and their athletic director, Austin Chambers here.
Hello, everybody. Chairman Francis and the board, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, Mr. Haines, thank you all for having us. Um, leading off tonight, we have the Mountain Seven Baseball Coach of the Year, Zack Shepherd.
Thank you, Chairman Francis and the board, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, and Mr. Haines for having us. Uh, we had a very successful season. Uh, region runner-up, uh, we're the first baseball team that has scored a winning game in the Western Regional Finals, so I think our kids deserve recognition for that. Um, we're gonna start with, uh, sophomore Amos Rich was the Mountain Seven Player of the Year. Junior Evan Connor was the Mountain Seven Catcher of the Year. Senior Noah Step was Mountain Seven All-Conference. Junior Colt Nelson, Mountain Seven All-Conference. Sophomore Mason Harold, All-Conference. Uh, Senior Jed West was also All-Conference. He's not able to be here tonight. And then we have Mountain Seven Honorable Mention Tyler Williams. Thank y'all.
All right, we got a lot of folks on, uh, vacation, um, so I'm gonna skip through. Um, talking for softball tonight is head JV coach Clifford Mills.
Only had one that was able to be here tonight, so this will be shortage. But, you know, we would just like to say how proud we are of all our girls. You know, we had a young team this week, this year, and they had to play a lot of experienced teams, and and they just hung right in there. The one that is here tonight is Addie Sampson. She is All-Conference. We also had Kenzie Messer. Alexis Marcos. We also had two honorable mention, Madison Brooks and Allison Satcher.
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Way to go, Addie.
We got some coaches that weren't able to make it tonight, but I do want to speak for the kids that made All-Conference with soccer. Anna Roth, Gracie Rinker, Annalyn Revelia, and Julia Wells made All-Conference. Honorable Mention Ouija Rickarama and Lee Reese with golf. We had a three A championship qualifier for regionals in Jacob Edwards. Thank you all. Y'all have a good night.
And lastly, we've got our Sportsman's Club from Pisgah and Canton, and I was told Rebecca Edwards would be presenting. Nathan Edwards.
That's who sent the email.
She is. I just want to thank y'all for having us, recognizing these kids and stuff and everything, and always supporting this program and everything and stuff. My name's Nathan Edwards, like he said. I'm the head coach for Pisgah and for Canton, but we're going to do Pisgah first here. I have a lot of other people to help out doing this stuff. My wife, for one. She's, she's all emails and all that stuff out and everything and stuff. We got Ryan here. We got Red. Mason, he's somewhere. Maybe back in the back. I don't know. He's back outside. Even Chad helps out a little bit here with us. It's the Mark Troll. But Pisgah had a very successful year this year. Starting in February, our Crusoe shoot, when we put on here, all the way through the state, where they come out on top all the way through until we got to state. We were their first overall all the way through every event we had. A district they placed second. Shotgun, Caleb Glance had first in the individual in shotgun and rifle. We've had first in rifle, second Hunter Skills. Levi Thomas, he's not here tonight. He had first place in individual Hunter Skills. And he was actually on our B team. We had a, we were able to have enough this year to have an A and B team. And he was on our B team. He shot shotgun and stuff on the B team. He scored high enough on his Hunter Skills to go individually to state and stuff and everything from the B team. He was the only one from the B team that got to go. And then we had first in archery at district, and Caden Carson had first individually at district, which placed us first overall in District Nine. Getting to, is it the state that way? State, we come out with first on top in archery. We had first place in archery. Again, this year, it was a second year in a row, and brought home first place in archery and everything and stuff. So, we recognize them. Let's see, we've got gentlemen Smith. We've got Jake Kinson. Tyler Franklin. Eden Mason. And then we got Mason. Eden Mason, Mason, Mason. And we got Caleb Glance. I also did Canton Middle School program, and Canton this year, we didn't come out with any hardware and any of that stuff, but we had a young group. I had six eighth graders that left me last year and moved into Pisgah, so we started out with a young group. I didn't have any eighth graders that come out to practices or any of the teams this year. I had six and seventh graders, so they, they get over a lot of nerves. All the ones of them here tonight, only two of them had ever been to district or state. So, it was saying we didn't come out with any hardware. We did score high enough at district to be able to go to state, though. And so, hopefully, we got a lot of those nerves and a lot of those things behind us, and we're coming out strong next year and everything and stuff. But we'll recognize them. We got Rayland Ledbatter. Haley Edwards. And we got Hunter Edwards. Branson Beaver. We got Aiden Troll. We got Madison Edmire. Last name will get you. We got Oakley Troll. One thing I want to mention real quick is, she's going to shoot me for doing this, but one of these girls standing right up here, I won't point exactly no fingers, but two of them I had this year come out, had never even touched a firearm or anything at all this year. And that was in October. So, to hear, and she made, ended up, she tried all three disciplines, done well in all three disciplines, ended up making the rifle team and went to district and to state. And she, the first time she had touched a rifle was in October. She had to go through a hunter safety course, get her hunter safety card, and then now she's here. And I mean, it was a lot of nerves she overcome, because when she first put that gun in her hand, she was doing like this. It was, I don't know, missing it. It was a mess. And yeah, I'll call her out. But now, I mean, after standing there with her and then she going through the program, you know, six practices into it, she was doing it, loading it herself, doing everything herself, and at the end of it, I didn't even have to worry about it. She could be down behind me, and I wouldn't have to worry. She knew how to handle it. And that's one good thing about this program is it teaches that with these kids, and they do it so much. Repetition, they remember. So, if it ever gets out somewhere, whatever, there's a firearm placed in their hands or anything out and about, they know how to handle it. That's what, it means a lot to me anyway. As a parent and as a coach, they know what to do with that stuff and everything. So, all right.
We're going to recess for about two minutes, two minutes and come back. We'll call the meeting back to order, and we'll come out of recess. And I think the award for patience goes to Mike Wood, who signed up to talk to us tonight from open session. And Mike, I'll have to read this comment real quick. Now is a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters concerned of the public. However, we request that you do not address specific students and/or personnel. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers that hear the time limitation requests against mentioning individual students or personnel. And then Mike Wood has signed up to talk to us about one of the great additions in Canton, North Carolina, the Charters of Freedom. And by the way, you did a great job the other day, Mike, the whole program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you taking the time to be there, along with others that attended. And I always want to honor the rules, but this was to be a thank you session.
Okay.
And I listened to what you said. I try to be a good listener. I'm not talking about any students. But I do want to recognize some of the adults that are...
You sure can.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to make sure I was following proper protocol. How blessed we are. And Chuck, little bird told me that you've already been down there and took your grandson. So, I appreciate you leading by example, and I hope others will follow that. We have had a lot of traffic in this. And the one thing I want to point out, it has been a blessing to work with the administration. It's been a blessing to work with this school board. God has blessed me over the years to work with Fortune 100 companies, Fortune 500 companies, professional sports teams, universities, and churches. And you hear the saying, it does not get overused. It is your people that make the difference. And I've told something very similar to Canton. Mayor Zeb Smathers and the board and the management team, this has been probably the finest group of people that I have ever had the blessing and the privilege to work with. Things could not have went any better. And when Foundation Ford, who is the parent company for this, they are, Charters of Freedom is a subsidiary of their corporation. They are a 501(c)(3). But when they came, they were so impressed with our community, the people that they had met and interacted with. This has been going on for a long time, getting this in place. But they were so pleased. We had almost three hundred people at the dedication, and for that, I am thankful. But I want to start out thanking Superintendent Dr. Trevor Putnam. He was our, one of our keynote speakers. Thank you again, my friend, for that. But I also want to thank Assistant Superintendent Jill Barker and Assistant Superintendent Graham Hanes, and just so many people to thank. And Brooke, I know you were not expecting this, but you have been a wonderful lady to work with. I know I've worn you out at times trying to get things into place. You have always been so responsive and so kind, and I appreciate that very, very much. Again, I want to thank each and every one of the board, and for the ones that are not here tonight, please let them know how grateful we truly are. I want to thank Pisgah Principal Clint Connor. Pisgah went above and beyond. I mean, we had people from the band. We had people from the chorus. We had people from the NJROTC, and they were so supportive. And some, the student body there was fantastic. They allowed them to bring over civics classes and history classes and some of the others. And as this thing is available twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, I know we came in at the end of the school year, but I truly want you to plant the seeds next year with the educators, the staff, to get as many people over there as we can. And Mr. Francis, you saw it firsthand, buddy. Was your grandson, was he pleased with it?
Oh, yeah. It's an education, Mike, is what's so great about it.
It is.
Seeing the documents that founded our country and gives you time to share that with your children and grandchildren and...
Absolutely.
Citizens.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't...
No, citizens. Just everybody should go down there.
I agree. We had many of the schools that purchased pavers. I did put a paver in for the administration, and I put a paver in for the school board, so y'all will be recognized for hopefully hundreds of years to come. And so, anyway, it's just, it's been a blessing. It's been a pleasure. And, you know, Pat Smathers, he's been a great supporter of what we're doing, and I appreciate that so much, Pat, both you and Zeb. And Jill Mann, even though it's an elementary school, I don't want to give the impression that this is just for high school civics and history. Jill and her staff, they had a principal's meeting that day. She had planned on coming. She sent over other staff, and they brought elementary school students, and they were really great. And they were very impressed with what they had. So, I want to leave here knowing this is for, I feel very fortunate and very blessed that Canton was the location for it. But this is for all of Haywood County, but it's also for our surrounding counties. We've already had contacts being made, other counties wanting to bring over their student body and show them what's going on with it. And the other thing, and this is where I need your help, because this is really a blessing for our community, but put the word out. If somebody, I'm not soliciting pavers, but I've had people, I had a person here tonight wanting to know, I didn't get it in time for the dedication. Is it too late? No, we can take pavers on, because this is a way to recognize your family, your business, your church, your nonprofit, whatever it is. And this will be ongoing for years to come. So, Chuck, you have my number. Mr. Francis, you have my number. They can reach out to me anytime. Brooke, I think you've got my number, and I will be available. But again, I'm just so pleased with the support that we've had, and I just want to thank you all for everything that you've done. You know, it is our founding documents, and I think God truly blessed us with great wisdom in our founding fathers. These documents to have stood the time, the years that have passed and still be as relevant today as they were back then. And we will be putting in a time capsule in the next few months. It's already there, but we'll be loading it up with information. So, as a school board, as the administration, as a family, if there's anything that you would like to have put in that time capsule, and that will be opened up. We were the fifty-fourth setting that they have done. They've done these all over the country. They are based out of Valdez, North Carolina. I'm not an employee. I just, they asked me if I could help bring it to Canton, and I told them I thought I could. And it's, I try to put my faith first, and like most folks, I fall short every day. But it's been one of the greatest things I've ever been asked to be involved with. And so, just, you know, they're going to keep adding these on. But if there's something that you want to put in that time capsule, they will open them all across the country on the three-hundredth anniversary of our U.S. Constitution. Now, that's quite a few years away, and I'd love to say I'll see you all there, but I'll probably be gone by then.
I won't back on either one of us being there.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir.
I am so grateful for the support that we have received. God bless y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you so much, and we appreciate your hard work on the Charters of Freedom, and it's something that'll keep on giving to our students throughout the centuries. Okay. Next, we have board members. You've had an opportunity to look at the May second closed session minutes and May sixth closed in special college sessions. Next we have four members you've had an opportunity to look at the May 2nd closed session minutes and May 6th closed and special called session minutes.
Make a motion. We approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Kirkpatrick, I hear second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next we have Ms. Allison Francis with some child nutrition annual bids. It's that time of year again.
It is. Chairman Francis, members of the board, tonight I'm asking for your request to award our chemical bid to Webb Chemical. They were the most reasonable and responsive bidder that returned a bid to us.
Okay, we need a motion for approval.
I make a motion. We approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Nesbit, say with Mr. Kirkpatrick to approve the bid as presented. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next, um, bids are extensions. Do you want to do each one separately or do all-
You can do them as a group. These were all presented to the Finance Committee board members and the Finance Committee basically checked off on these. So I'd just do them as a group.
All right. Uh, we have-
Okay, Mr. Smathers. Okay, thanks.
Our milk bid, uh, going to Dean Foods for year four of a possible five-year term. Our miscellaneous beverage bid to Pepsi for year five of a possible five-year term. Our food and supply bid to U.S. Food Service, year three of a possible five-year term. Our produce bid to Marvin's Produce, years, year three of a possible five-year term. And our ice cream bid to Hershey's for year three of a possible five-year term.
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve these, uh, bids for system as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. I hear second.
Second.
Say with Ms. Morris, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Ms. Edmonds up next. She's going to talk to us about our CTE local plan.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, at this time I would like to ask for your approval of the 2024-2026 CTE local plan. As a two-year plan, Haywood County CTE program will have an emphasis on providing appropriate career clusters opportunities, offering credentialing for students and staff, meeting ESEA requirements, provide an appropriate CTE courses for high school students from the North Carolina essential standards and supporting high school reform. You have any questions about it?
Any questions?
So these certifications is something we haven't had before?
Um, yes, we do. Um, there are credentialing, like, um, within, say, metals, there, there's a NIMs credential. Um, and, um, like with the, within the different CTE programs, there are different credentials that the students can attain through taking those exams and passing them.
Thank you.
Or producing something. Like in metals, it's a widget. I mean, in welding, it's a widget.
Okay. Thank you.
Need a motion for approval?
So move.
Mr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Any questions? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next board members, we have, uh, some folks who are going to attend the North Carolina School Board Association Leadership Conference, June through 10th through the 14th. We need to approve that trip.
So move.
We have a motion. Mr. Kirkpatrick, I hear second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark.
He's been quiet tonight. Mr. Clark seconded the motion. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mr. Graham Haynes.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, for policy this evening, uh, we've got eight policies up for first read, uh, all of which are just minor, minor changes and legalese, um, that we received from the State School Board Association. So I would ask that you, uh, please table those for 30 days, if you will, uh, for public input.
Okay. With that objection, we'll table those for, uh, six, well, for, till the next board meeting is the best way to comment in it.
Correct. Always say-
Till the next regular board meeting of the board. And it will be posted up so we can have public comment. Thank you very much. And any questions from board members or anything? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, next, uh, I added a item which was the, uh, band chorus and drama and junior ROTC supplement scale. I think everybody got a copy of it. Uh, we agreed to put it on the agenda during the agenda adjustments. This time I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion. Say with Mr. Nesbit, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. I think that's a good step forward myself. Thank you for this work on this. Mr. Hines, thank you. All administrators, thank you. Next we had the Finance Committee stuff.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I want to bring the monthly, regular monthly financial reports reviewed tonight by the Financial Committee. And everything looks good on soon.
Okay.
I second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Clark. Say with Mr. Kirkpatrick, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Also, I want to bring a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Seven that was discussed in the committee meeting.
Correct. We have a motion from Mr. Clark. I hear second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. I think we had some other items to-
Two more. Approve the June budget amendments and re, uh, revision resolution. Uh, this resolution allows the superintendent to approve all June 30th, 2024 fiscal year budget amendments and revision with reporting of those to the Board of the Edu, Board of Education at the July board meeting. Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry, I don't have my glasses on.
We have a motion from Mr. Clark and a second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, I need, need longer arms. Uh, approve the 2024-2025 interim budget resolution. This resolution appropriates expenditures and revenues for the purpose of paying salaries, uh, unusual, ordinary expenses for the, and, and, and the, uh, interval between July 1, 23 and the adoption of the budget. Sorry, I sure brought my glasses.
It's all right. Basically what we're saying is, is we're going to pass a intermittent budget. Interim budget until basically the legislature gets us the real numbers, is the way I understand. Is that correct? Okay.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Clark made the motion. Say with Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, I think Mr. Nesbit-
Mr. Chairman, we've got, uh, six motions from Building and Grounds. The first is a motion to approve, uh, campus beautification at River Bend Elementary School performed by Crabtree Baptist Church at no cost to Haywood County schools. Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Nesbit. Say with Mr. Kirkpatrick, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Second motion is to approve Geo Services change order for Tuscaloosa High School track project in the amount of $105,400 to be paid from the lottery fund.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Nesbit. Say with Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
That additional?
That is additional. That is relocation of triple jump, long jump, pole vault and shot put. It's a different areas there as well as a track surface color change.
It's due to the layout of the track.
Layout of the, the topography, I guess you would say there is challenging. So to try to fit everything accordingly.
Very good. Any other comments, questions before we vote? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Third motion is to approve Fence Scape's proposal for Pisgah High School track fence in the amount of $46,000 to be paid from lottery.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Nesbit. I hear second. Say with Ms. Morris, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Fourth motion is to approve up to $50,000 to complete the O'Nada dust collection system at Canton Middle School, Waynesville Middle School and Pisgah High School using ester funds.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Nesbit. Say with Mr. Kirkpatrick, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Fifth motion is to approve Civil, Civil Design Concepts proposal for up to $32,000 for a boundary and topo survey for the pin number at the recently purchased property using state emergency management funds.
We have a motion from Mr. Nesbit. I hear second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Clark, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the purchase of a new greenhouse at Central Haywood High School from gross ban in the amount of $29,208.10 to be paid from insurance money.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Nesbit. Do I hear second? Say with Ms. Morris, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
That's all from Building and Grounds.
Thank you very much. Great projects going on. Thank you, Mr. Haynes and, uh, all the people on Building and Grounds and all the work that was done earlier on the finance as well. Thank you. Next we have our personnel from Dr. Putnam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight for, uh, personnel for information, we have 19 separations from employment, five employment status changes, 26 student teacher interns, uh, three leaves of absence. Personnel for approval, we have 20 employments, 200 employment status changes, one leave of absence, 38 staff coaches, 15 non-staff coaches and four volunteer services.
Okay. I need a motion for approval.
I make a motion. We approve the personnel as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Nesbit. I hear second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Job well done and I love recognizing the, the kids that's excelled in sports and in athle, uh, sports and scholastic abilities and our staff, our retirees. We want to thank them for the many, many years of service. I bet you if you had it all add up, it'd be thousands of years really, you know, the experience in the classroom and in our school system. And we want to thank those retirees for their hard work and dedication. There being nothing else to come before the board, meeting adjourned.